Hello, kid. You there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Should the... Should I tell the planning board about Scott? The letter I sent to Scott or no?
If you want to do an update during your discussion, you know, the CEO comment period, you can let him know about the letters. The room is live, just so you know.
Great, thanks. Yep. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[167.92][167.92][S01. Thank you.[168.00][168.00][S01. Thank you.[168.08][168.08][S01. Thank you.[168.16][168.16][S01. Thank you.[168.24][168.24][S01. Thank you.[168.32][168.32][S01. Thank you.[168.40][168.40][S01. Thank you.[168.48][168.48][S01. Thank you.[168.56][168.56][S01. Thank you.[168.64][168.64][S01. Thank you.[168.72][168.72][S01. Thank you.[168.80][168.80][S01. Thank you.[168.88][168.88][S01. Thank you.[168.96][168.96][S01. Thank you.[169.04][169.04][S01. Thank you.[169.12][169.12][S01. Thank you.[169.20][169.20][S01. Thank you.[169.28][169.28][S01. Thank you.[169.36][169.36][S01. Thank you.[169.44][169.44][S01. Thank you.[169.52][169.52][S01. Thank you.[169.60][169.60][S01. Thank you.[169.68][169.68][S01. Thank you.[169.76][169.76][S01. Thank you.[169.84][169.84][S01. Thank you.[170.40][170.40][S01. Thank you.[170.48][170.48][S01. Thank you.[170.56][170.56][S01. Thank you.[170.64][170.64][S01. Thank you.[170.72][170.72][S01. Thank you.[170.80][170.80][S01. Thank you.[170.88][170.88][S01. Thank you.[170.96][170.96][S01. Thank you.[171.04][171.04][S01. Thank you.[171.12][171.12][S01. Thank you.[171.20][171.20][S01. Thank you.[171.28][171.28][S01. Thank you.[171.36][171.36][S01. Thank you.[171.44][171.44][S01. Thank you.[171.52][171.52][S01. Thank you.[171.60][171.60][S01. Thank you.[171.68][171.68][S01. Thank you.[171.76][171.76][S01. Thank you.[171.84][171.84][S01. Thank you.[171.92][171.92][S01. Thank you.[172.00][172.00][S01. Thank you.[172.08][172.08][S01. Thank you.[172.16][172.16][S01. Thank you.[172.24][172.24][S01. Thank you.[172.32][172.32][S01. Thank you.[172.40][172.40][S01. Thank you.[172.48][172.48][S01. Thank you.[172.56][172.56][S01. Thank you.[172.64][172.64][S01. Thank you.[172.72][172.72][S01. Thank you.[172.80][172.80][S01. Thank you.[172.88][172.88][S01. Thank you.[172.96][172.96][S01. Thank you.[173.04][173.04][S01. Thank you.[173.12][173.12][S01. Thank you.[173.20][173.20][S01. Thank you.[173.28][173.28][S01. Thank you.[173.36][173.36][S01. Thank you.[173.44][173.44][S01. Thank you.[173.52][173.52][S01. Thank you.[173.60][173.60][S01. Thank you.[173.68][173.68][S01. Thank you.[173.76][173.76][S01. Thank you.[173.84][173.84][S01. Thank you.[173.92][173.92][S01. Thank you.[174.00][174.00][S01. Thank you.[174.08][174.08][S01. Thank you.[174.16][174.16][S01. Thank you.[174.24][174.24][S01. Thank you.[174.32][174.32][S01. Thank you.[174.40][174.40][S01. Thank you.[174.48][174.48][S01. Thank you.[174.56][174.56][S01. Thank you.[174.64][174.64][S01. Thank you.[174.72][174.72][S01. Thank you.[174.80][174.80][S01. Thank you.[174.88][174.88][S01. Thank you.[174.96][174.96][S01. Thank you.[175.04][175.04][S01. Thank you.[175.12][175.12][S01. Thank you.[175.20][175.20][S01. Thank you.[175.28][175.28][S01. Thank you.[175.36][175.36][S01. Thank you.[175.44][175.44][S01. Thank you.[175.52][175.52][S01. Thank you.[175.60][175.60][S01. Thank you.[175.68][175.68][S01. Thank you.[175.76][175.76][S01. Thank you.[175.84][175.84][S01. Thank you.[175.92][175.92][S01. Thank you.[176.00][176.00][S01. Thank you.[176.08][176.08][S01. Thank you.[176.16][176.16][S01. Thank you.[176.24][176.24][S01. Thank you.[176.32][176.32][S01. Thank you.[176.40][176.40][S01. Thank you.[176.48][176.48][S01. Thank you.[176.56][176.56][S01. Thank you.[176.64][176.64][S01. Thank you.[176.72][176.72][S01. Thank you.[176.80][176.80][S01. Thank you.[176.88][176.88][S01. Thank you.[176.96][176.96][S01. Thank you.[177.04][177.04][S01. Thank you.[177.12][177.12][S01. Thank you.[177.20][177.20][S01. Thank you.[177.28][177.28][S01. Thank you.[177.36][177.36][S01. Thank you.[177.44][177.44][S01. Thank you.[177.52][177.52][S01. Thank you.[177.60][177.60][S01. Thank you.[177.68][177.68][S01. Thank you.[177.76][177.76][S01. Thank you.[177.84][177.84][S01. Thank you.[177.92][177.92][S01. Thank you.[178.00][178.00][S01. Thank you.[178.08][178.08][S01. Thank you.[178.16][178.16][S01. Thank you.[178.24][178.24][S01. Thank you.[178.32][178.32][S01. Thank you.[178.40][178.40][S01. Thank you.[178.48][178.48][S01. Thank you.[178.56][178.56][S01. Thank you.[178.64][178.64][S01. Thank you.[178.72][178.72][S01. Thank you.[178.80][178.80][S01. Thank you.[178.88][178.88][S01. Thank you.[178.96][178.96][S01. Thank you.[179.04][179.04][S01. Thank you.[179.12][179.12][S01. Thank you.[179.20][179.20][S01. Thank you.[179.28][179.28][S01. Thank you.[179.36][179.36][S01. Thank you.[179.44][179.44][S01. Thank you.[179.52][179.52][S01. Thank you.[179.60][179.60][S01. Thank you.[179.68][179.68][S01. Thank you.[179.76][179.76][S01. Thank you.[179.84][179.84][S01. Thank you.[180.40][180.40][S01. Thank you.[180.48][180.48][S01. Thank you.[180.56][180.56][S01. Thank you.[180.64][180.64][S01. Thank you.[180.72][180.72][S01. Thank you.[180.80][180.80][S01. Thank you.[180.88][180.88][S01. Thank you.[180.96][180.96][S01. Thank you.[181.04][181.04][S01. Thank you.[181.12][181.12][S01. Thank you.[181.20][181.20][S01. Thank you.[181.28][181.28][S01. Thank you.[181.36][181.36][S01. Thank you.[181.44][181.44][S01. Thank you.[181.52][181.52][S01. Thank you.[181.60][181.60][S01. Thank you.[181.68][181.68][S01. Thank you.[181.76][181.76][S01. Thank you.[181.84][181.84][S01. Thank you.[181.92][181.92][S01. Thank you.[182.00][182.00][S01. Thank you.[182.08][182.08][S01. Thank you.[182.16][182.16][S01. Thank you.[182.24][182.24][S01. Thank you.[182.32][182.32][S01. Thank you.[182.40][182.40][S01. Thank you.[182.48][182.48][S01. Thank you.[182.56][182.56][S01. Thank you.[182.64][182.64][S01. Thank you.[182.72][182.72][S01. Thank you.[182.80][182.80][S01. Thank you.[182.88][182.88][S01. Thank you.[182.96][182.96][S01. Thank you.[183.04][183.04][S01. Thank you.[183.12][183.12][S01. Thank you.[183.20][183.20][S01. Thank you.[183.28][183.28][S01. Thank you.[183.36][183.36][S01. Thank you.[183.44][183.44][S01. Thank you.[183.52][183.52][S01. Thank you.[183.60][183.60][S01. Thank you.[183.68][183.68][S01. Thank you.[183.76][183.76][S01. Thank you.[183.84][183.84][S01. Thank you.[183.92][183.92][S01. Thank you.[184.00][184.00][S01. Thank you.[184.08][184.08][S01. Thank you.[184.16][184.16][S01. Thank you.[184.24][184.24][S01. Thank you.[184.32][184.32][S01. Thank you.[184.40][184.40][S01. Thank you.[184.48][184.48][S01. Thank you.[184.56][184.56][S01. Thank you.[184.64][184.64][S01. Thank you.[184.72][184.72][S01. Thank you.[184.80][184.80][S01. Thank you.[184.88][184.88][S01. Thank you.[184.96][184.96][S01. Thank you.[185.04][185.04][S01. Thank you.[185.12][185.12][S01. Thank you.[185.20][185.20][S01. Thank you.[185.28][185.28][S01. Thank you.[185.36][185.36][S01. Thank you.[185.44][185.44][S01. Thank you.[185.52][185.52][S01. Thank you.[185.60][185.60][S01. Thank you.[185.68][185.68][S01. Thank you.[185.76][185.76][S01. Thank you.[185.84][185.84][S01. Thank you.[185.92][185.92][S01. Thank you.[186.00][186.00][S01. Thank you.[186.08][186.08][S01. Thank you.[186.16][186.16][S01. Thank you.[186.24][186.24][S01. Thank you.[186.32][186.32][S01. Thank you.[186.40][186.40][S01. Thank you.[186.48][186.48][S01. Thank you.[186.56][186.56][S01. Thank you.[186.64][186.64][S01. Thank you.[186.72][186.72][S01. Thank you.[186.80][186.80][S01. Thank you.[186.88][186.88][S01. Thank you.[186.96][186.96][S01. Thank you.[187.04][187.04][S01. Thank you.[187.12][187.12][S01. Thank you.[187.20][187.20][S01. Thank you.[187.28][187.28][S01. Thank you.[187.36][187.36][S01. Thank you.[187.44][187.44][S01. Thank you.[187.52][187.52][S01. Thank you.[187.60][187.60][S01. Thank you.[187.68][187.68][S01. Thank you.[187.76][187.76][S01. Thank you.[187.84][187.84][S01. Thank you.[187.92][187.92][S01. Thank you.[188.00][188.00][S01. Thank you.[188.08][188.08][S01. Thank you.[188.16][188.16][S01. Thank you.[188.24][188.24][S01. Thank you.[188.32][188.32][S01. Thank you.[188.40][188.40][S01. Thank you.[188.48][188.48][S01. Thank you.[188.56][188.56][S01. Thank you.[188.64][188.64][S01. Thank you.[188.72][188.72][S01. Thank you.[188.80][188.80][S01. Thank you.[188.88][188.88][S01. Thank you.[188.96][188.96][S01. Thank you.[189.04][189.04][S01. Thank you.[189.12][189.12][S01. Thank you.[189.20][189.20][S01. Thank you.[189.28][189.28][S01. Thank you.[189.36][189.36][S01. Thank you.[189.44][189.44][S01. Thank you.[189.52][189.52][S01. Thank you.[189.60][189.60][S01. Thank you.[189.68][189.68][S01. Thank you.[189.76][189.76][S01. Thank you.[189.84][189.84][S01. Thank you.[189.92][189.92][S01. Thank you.[190.00][190.00][S01. Thank you.[190.08][190.08][S01. Thank you.[190.16][190.16][S01. Thank you.[190.24][190.24][S01. Thank you.[190.32][190.32][S01. Thank you.[190.40][190.40][S01. Thank you.[190.48][190.48][S01. Thank you.[190.56][190.56][S01. Thank you.[190.64][190.64][S01. Thank you.[190.72][190.72][S01. Thank you.[190.80][190.80][S01. Thank you.[190.88][190.88][S01. Thank you.[190.96][190.96][S01. Thank you.[191.04][191.04][S01. Thank you.[191.12][191.12][S01. Thank you.[191.20][191.20][S01. Thank you.[191.28][191.28][S01. Thank you.[191.36][191.36][S01. Thank you.[191.44][191.44][S01. Thank you.[191.52][191.52][S01. Thank you.[191.60][191.60][S01. Thank you.[191.68][191.68][S01. Thank you.[191.76][191.76][S01. Thank you.[191.84][191.84][S01. Thank you.[191.92][191.92][S01. Thank you.[192.00][192.00][S01. Thank you.[192.08][192.08][S01. Thank you.[192.16][192.16][S01. Thank you.[192.24][192.24][S01. Thank you.[192.32][192.32][S01. Thank you.[192.40][192.40][S01. Thank you.[192.48][192.48][S01. Thank you.[192.56][192.56][S01. Thank you.[192.64][192.64][S01. Thank you.[192.72][192.72][S01. Thank you.[192.80][192.80][S01. Thank you.[192.88][192.88][S01. Thank you.[192.96][192.96][S01. Thank you.[193.04][193.04][S01. Thank you.[193.12][193.12][S01. Thank you.[193.20][193.20][S01. Thank you.[193.28][193.28][S01. Thank you.[193.36][193.36][S01. Thank you.[193.44][193.44][S01. Thank you.[193.52][193.52][S01. Thank you.[193.60][193.60][S01. Thank you.[193.68][193.68][S01. Thank you.[193.76][193.76][S01. Thank you.[193.84][193.84][S01. Thank you.[193.92][193.92][S01. Thank you.[194.00][194.00][S01. Thank you.[194.08][194.08][S01. Thank you.[194.16][194.16][S01. Thank you.[194.24][194.24][S01. Thank you.[194.32][194.32][S01. Thank you.[194.40][194.40][S01. Thank you.[194.48][194.48][S01. Thank you.[194.56][194.56][S01. Thank you.[194.64][194.64][S01. Thank you.[194.72][194.72][S01. Thank you.[194.80][194.80][S01. Thank you.[194.88][194.88][S01. Thank you.[194.96][194.96][S01. Thank you.[195.04][195.04][S01. Thank you.[195.12][195.12][S01. Thank you.[195.20][195.20][S01. Thank you.[195.28][195.28][S01. Thank you.[195.36][195.36][S01. Thank you.[195.44][195.44][S01. Thank you.[195.52][195.52][S01. Thank you.[195.60][195.60][S01. Thank you.[195.68][195.68][S01. Thank you.[195.76][195.76][S01. Thank you.[195.84][195.84][S01. Thank you.[195.92][195.92][S01. Thank you.[196.00][196.00][S01. Thank you.[196.08][196.08][S01. Thank you.[196.16][196.16][S01. Thank you.[196.24][196.24][S01. Thank you.[196.32][196.32][S01. Thank you.[196.40][196.40][S01. Thank you.[196.48][196.48][S01. Thank you.[196.56][196.56][S01. Thank you.[196.64][196.64][S01. Thank you.[196.72][196.72][S01. Thank you.[196.80][196.80][S01. Thank you.[196.88][196.88][S01. Thank you.[196.96][196.96][S01. Thank you.[197.04][197.04][S01. Thank you.[197.12][197.12][S01. Thank you.[197.20][197.20][S01. Thank you.[197.28][197.28][S01. Thank you.[197.36][197.36][S01. Thank you.[197.44][197.44][S01. Thank you.[197.52][197.52][S01. Thank you.[197.60][197.60][S01. Thank you.[197.68][197.68][S01. Thank you.[197.76][197.76][S01. Thank you.[197.84][197.84][S01. Thank you.[197.92][197.92][S01. Thank you.[198.00][198.00][S01. Thank you.[198.08][198.08][S01. Thank you.[198.16][198.16][S01. Thank you.[198.24][198.24][S01. Thank you.[198.32][198.32][S01. Thank you.[198.40][198.40][S01. Thank you.[198.48][198.48][S01. Thank you.[198.56][198.56][S01. Thank you.[198.64][198.64][S01. Thank you.[198.72][198.72][S01. Thank you.[198.80][198.80][S01. Thank you.[198.88][198.88][S01. Thank you.[198.96][198.96][S01. Thank you.[199.04][199.04][S01. Thank you.[199.12][199.12][S01. Thank you.[199.20][199.20][S01. Thank you.[199.28][199.28][S01. Thank you.[199.36][199.36][S01. Thank you.[199.44][199.44][S01. Thank you.[199.52][199.52][S01. Thank you.[199.60][199.60][S01. Thank you.[199.68][199.68][S01. Thank you.[199.76][199.76][S01. Thank you.[199.84][199.84][S01. Thank you.[199.92][199.92][S01. Thank you.[199.96][199.96][S01. Thank you.[200.04][200.04][S01. Thank you.[200.12][200.12][S01. Thank you.[200.20][200.20][S01. Thank you.[200.28][200.28][S01. Thank you.[200.36][200.36][S01. Thank you.[200.44][200.44][S01. Thank you.[200.52][200.52][S01. Thank you.[200.60][200.60][S01. Thank you.[200.68][200.68][S01. Thank you.[200.76][200.76][S01. Thank you.[200.84][200.84][S01. Thank you.[200.92][200.92][S01. Thank you.[201.00][201.00][S01. Thank you.[201.08][201.08][S01. Thank you.[201.16][201.16][S01. Thank you.[201.24][201.24][S01. Thank you.[201.32][201.32][S01. Thank you.[201.40][201.40][S01. Thank you.[201.48][201.48][S01. Thank you.[201.56][201.56][S01. Thank you.[201.64][201.64][S01. Thank you.[201.72][201.72][S01. Thank you.[201.80][201.80][S01. Thank you.[201.88][201.88][S01. Thank you.[201.96][201.96][S01. Thank you.[202.04][202.04][S01. Thank you.[202.12][202.12][S01. Thank you.[202.20][202.20][S01. Thank you.[202.28][202.28][S01. Thank you.[202.36][202.36][S01. Thank you.[202.44][202.44][S01. Thank you.[202.52][202.52][S01. Thank you.[202.60][202.60][S01. Thank you.[202.68][202.68][S01. Thank you.[202.76][202.76][S01. Thank you.[202.84][202.84][S01. Thank you.[202.92][202.92][S01. Thank you.[203.00][203.00][S01. Thank you.[203.08][203.08][S01. Thank you.[203.16][203.16][S01. Thank you.[203.24][203.24][S01. Thank you.[203.32][203.32][S01. Thank you.[203.40][203.40][S01. Thank you.[203.48][203.48][S01. Thank you.[203.56][203.56][S01. Thank you.[203.64][203.64][S01. Thank you.[203.72][203.72][S01. Thank you.[203.80][203.80][S01. Thank you.[203.88][203.88][S01. Thank you.[203.96][203.96][S01. Thank you.[204.04][204.04][S01. Thank you.[204.12][204.12][S01. Thank you.[204.20][204.20][S01. Thank you.[204.28][204.28][S01. Thank you.[204.36][204.36][S01. Thank you.[204.44][204.44][S01. Thank you.[204.52][204.52][S01. Thank you.[204.60][204.60][S01. Thank you.[204.68][204.68][S01. Thank you.[204.76][204.76][S01. Thank you.[204.84][204.84][S01. Thank you.[204.92][204.92][S01. Thank you.[205.00][205.00][S01. Thank you.[205.08][205.08][S01. Thank you.[205.16][205.16][S01. Thank you.[205.24][205.24][S01. Thank you.[205.32][205.32][S01. Thank you.[205.40][205.40][S01. Thank you.[205.48][205.48][S01. Thank you.[205.56][205.56][S01. Thank you.[205.64][205.64][S01. Thank you.[205.72][205.72][S01. Thank you.[205.80][205.80][S01. Thank you.[205.88][205.88][S01. Thank you.[205.96][205.96][S01. Thank you.[206.04][206.04][S01. Thank you.[206.12][206.12][S01. Thank you.[206.20][206.20][S01. Thank you.[206.28][206.28][S01. Thank you.[206.36][206.36][S01. Thank you.[206.44][206.44][S01. Thank you.[206.52][206.52][S01. Thank you.[206.60][206.60][S01. Thank you.[206.68][206.68][S01. Thank you.[206.76][206.76][S01. Thank you.[206.84][206.84][S01. Thank you.[206.92][206.92][S01. Thank you.[207.00][207.00][S01. Thank you.[207.08][207.08][S01. Thank you.[207.16][207.16][S01. Thank you.[207.24][207.24][S01. Thank you.[207.32][207.32][S01. Thank you.[207.40][207.40][S01. Thank you.[207.48][207.48][S01. Thank you.[207.56][207.56][S01. Thank you.[207.64][207.64][S01. Thank you.[207.72][207.72][S01. Thank you.[207.80][207.80][S01. Thank you.[207.88][207.88][S01. Thank you.[207.96][207.96][S01. Thank you.[208.04][208.04][S01. Thank you.[208.12][208.12][S01. Thank you.[208.20][208.20][S01. Thank you.[208.28][208.28][S01. Thank you.[208.36][208.36][S01. Thank you.[208.44][208.44][S01. Thank you.[208.52][208.52][S01. Thank you.[208.60][208.60][S01. Thank you.[208.68][208.68][S01. Thank you.[208.76][208.76][S01. Thank you.[208.84][208.84][S01. Thank you.[208.92][208.92][S01. Thank you.[209.00][209.00][S01. Thank you.[209.08][209.08][S01. Thank you.[209.16][209.16][S01. Thank you.[209.24][209.24][S01. Thank you.[209.32][209.32][S01. Thank you.[209.40][209.40][S01. Thank you.[209.48][209.48][S01. Thank you.[209.56][209.56][S01. Thank you.[209.64][209.64][S01. Thank you.[209.72][209.72][S01. Thank you.[209.80][209.80][S01. Thank you.[209.88][209.88][S01. Thank you.[209.96][209.96][S01. Thank you.[210.04][210.04][S01. Thank you.[210.12][210.12][S01. Thank you.[210.20][210.20][S01. Thank you.[210.28][210.28][S01. Thank you.[210.36][210.36][S01. Thank you.[210.44][210.44][S01. Thank you.[210.52][210.52][S01. Thank you.[210.60][210.60][S01. Thank you.[210.68][210.68][S01. Thank you.[210.76][210.76][S01. Thank you.[210.84][210.84][S01. Thank you.[210.92][210.92][S01. Thank you.[211.00][211.00][S01. Thank you.[211.08][211.08][S01. Thank you.[211.16][211.16][S01. Thank you.[211.24][211.24][S01. Thank you.[211.32][211.32][S01. Thank you.[211.40][211.40][S01. Thank you.[211.48][211.48][S01. Thank you.[211.56][211.56][S01. Thank you.[211.64][211.64][S01. Thank you.[211.72][211.72][S01. Thank you.[211.80][211.80][S01. Thank you.[211.88][211.88][S01. Thank you.[211.96][211.96][S01. Thank you.[212.04][212.04][S01. Thank you.[212.12][212.12][S01. Thank you.[212.20][212.20][S01. Thank you.[212.28][212.28][S01. Thank you.[212.36][212.36][S01. Thank you.[212.44][212.44][S01. Thank you.[212.52][212.52][S01. Thank you.[212.60][212.60][S01. Thank you.[212.68][212.68][S01. Thank you.[212.76][212.76][S01. Thank you.[212.84][212.84][S01. Thank you.[212.92][212.92][S01. Thank you.[213.00][213.00][S01. Thank you.[213.08][213.08][S01. Thank you.[213.16][213.16][S01. Thank you.[213.24][213.24][S01. Thank you.[213.32][213.32][S01. Thank you.[213.40][213.40][S01. Thank you.[213.48][213.48][S01. Thank you.[213.56][213.56][S01. Thank you.[213.64][213.64][S01. Thank you.[213.72][213.72][S01. Thank you.[213.80][213.80][S01. Thank you.[213.88][213.88][S01. Thank you.[213.96][213.96][S01. Thank you.[214.04][214.04][S01. Thank you.[214.12][214.12][S01. Thank you.[214.20][214.20][S01. Thank you.[214.28][214.28][S01. Thank you.[214.36][214.36][S01. Thank you.[214.44][214.44][S01. Thank you.[214.52][214.52][S01. Thank you.[214.60][214.60][S01. Thank you.[214.68][214.68][S01. Thank you.[214.76][214.76][S01. Thank you.[214.84][214.84][S01. Thank you.[214.92][214.92][S01. Thank you.[215.00][215.00][S01. Thank you.[215.08][215.08][S01. Thank you.[215.16][215.16][S01. Thank you.[215.24][215.24][S01. Thank you.[215.32][215.32][S01. Thank you.[215.40][215.40][S01. Thank you.[215.48][215.48][S01. Thank you.[215.56][215.56][S01. Thank you.[215.64][215.64][S01. Thank you.[215.72][215.72][S01. Thank you.[215.80][215.80][S01. Thank you.[215.88][215.88][S01. Thank you.[215.96][215.96][S01. Thank you.[216.04][216.04][S01. Thank you.[216.12][216.12][S01. Thank you.[216.20][216.20][S01. Thank you.[216.28][216.28][S01. Thank you.[216.36][216.36][S01. Thank you.[216.44][216.44][S01. Thank you.[216.52][216.52][S01. Thank you.[216.60][216.60][S01. Thank you.[216.68][216.68][S01. Thank you.[216.76][216.76][S01. Thank you.[216.84][216.84][S01. Thank you.[216.92][216.92][S01. Thank you.[217.00][217.00][S01. Thank you.[217.08][217.08][S01. Thank you.[217.16][217.16][S01. Thank you.[217.24][217.24][S01. Thank you.[217.32][217.32][S01. Thank you.[217.40][217.40][S01. Thank you.[217.48][217.48][S01. Thank you.[217.56][217.56][S01. Thank you.[217.64][217.64][S01. Thank you.[217.72][217.72][S01. Thank you.[217.80][217.80][S01. Thank you.[217.88][217.88][S01. Thank you.[217.96][217.96][S01. Thank you.[218.04][218.04][S01. Thank you.[218.12][218.12][S01. Thank you.[218.20][218.20][S01. Thank you.[218.28][218.28][S01. Thank you.[218.36][218.36][S01. Thank you.[218.44][218.44][S01. Thank you.[218.52][218.52][S01. Thank you.[218.60][218.60][S01. Thank you.[218.68][218.68][S01. Thank you.[218.76][218.76][S01. Thank you.[218.84][218.84][S01. Thank you.[218.92][218.92][S01. Thank you.[219.00][219.00][S01. Thank you.[219.08][219.08][S01. Thank you.[219.16][219.16][S01. Thank you.[219.24][219.24][S01. Thank you.[219.32][219.32][S01. Thank you.[219.40][219.40][S01. Thank you.[219.48][219.48][S01. Thank you.[219.56][219.56][S01. Thank you.[219.64][219.64][S01. Thank you.[219.72][219.72][S01. Thank you.[219.80][219.80][S01. Thank you.[219.88][219.88][S01. Thank you.[219.96][219.96][S01. Thank you.[220.04][220.04][S01. Thank you.[220.12][220.12][S01. Thank you.[220.20][220.20][S01. Thank you.[220.28][220.28][S01. Thank you.[220.36][220.36][S01. Thank you.[220.44][220.44][S01. Thank you.[220.52][220.52][S01. Thank you.[220.60][220.60][S01. Thank you.[220.68][220.68][S01. Thank you.[220.76][220.76][S01. Thank you.[220.84][220.84][S01. Thank you.[220.92][220.92][S01. Thank you.[221.00][221.00][S01. Thank you.[221.08][221.08][S01. Thank you.[221.16][221.16][S01. Thank you.[221.24][221.24][S01. Thank you.[221.32][221.32][S01. Thank you.[221.40][221.40][S01. Thank you.[221.48][221.48][S01. Thank you.[221.56][221.56][S01. Thank you.[221.64][221.64][S01. Thank you.[221.72][221.72][S01. Thank you.[221.80][221.80][S01. Thank you.[221.88][221.88][S01. Thank you.[221.96][221.96][S01. Thank you.[222.04][222.04][S01. Thank you.[222.12][222.12][S01. Thank you.[222.20][222.20][S01. Thank you.[222.28][222.28][S01. Thank you.[222.36][222.36][S01. Thank you.[222.44][222.44][S01. Thank you.[222.52][222.52][S01. Thank you.[222.60][222.60][S01. Thank you.[222.68][222.68][S01. Thank you.[222.76][222.76][S01. Thank you.[222.84][222.84][S01. Thank you.[222.92][222.92][S01. Thank you.[223.00][223.00][S01. Thank you.[223.08][223.08][S01. Thank you.[223.16][223.16][S01. Thank you.[223.24][223.24][S01. Thank you.[223.32][223.32][S01. Thank you.[223.40][223.40][S01. Thank you.[223.48][223.48][S01. Thank you.[223.56][223.56][S01. Thank you.[223.64][223.64][S01. Thank you.[223.72][223.72][S01. Thank you.[223.80][223.80][S01. Thank you.[223.88][223.88][S01. Thank you.[223.96][223.96][S01. Thank you.[224.04][224.04][S01. Thank you.[224.12][224.12][S01. Thank you.[224.20][224.20][S01. Thank you.[224.28][224.28][S01. Thank you.[224.36][224.36][S01. Thank you.[224.44][224.44][S01. Thank you.[224.52][224.52][S01. Thank you.[224.60][224.60][S01. Thank you.[224.68][224.68][S01. Thank you.[224.76][224.76][S01. Thank you.[224.84][224.84][S01. Thank you.[224.92][224.92][S01. Thank you.[225.00][225.00][S01. Thank you.[225.08][225.08][S01. Thank you.[225.16][225.16][S01. Thank you.[225.24][225.24][S01. Thank you.[225.32][225.32][S01. Thank you.[225.40][225.40][S01. Thank you.[225.48][225.48][S01. Thank you.[225.56][225.56][S01. Thank you.[225.64][225.64][S01. Thank you.[225.72][225.72][S01. Thank you.[225.80][225.80][S01. Thank you.[225.88][225.88][S01. Thank you.[225.96][225.96][S01. Thank you.[226.04][226.04][S01. Thank you.[226.12][226.12][S01. Thank you.[226.20][226.20][S01. Thank you.[226.28][226.28][S01. Thank you.[226.36][226.36][S01. Thank you.[226.44][226.44][S01. Thank you.[226.52][226.52][S01. Thank you.[226.60][226.60][S01. Thank you.[226.68][226.68][S01. Thank you.[226.76][226.76][S01. Thank you.[226.84][226.84][S01. Thank you.[226.92][226.92][S01. Thank you.[227.00][227.00][S01. Thank you.[227.08][227.08][S01. Thank you.[227.16][227.16][S01. Thank you.[227.24][227.24][S01. Thank you.[227.32][227.32][S01. Thank you.[227.40][227.40][S01. Thank you.[227.48][227.48][S01. Thank you.[227.56][227.56][S01. Thank you.[227.64][227.64][S01. Thank you.[227.72][227.72][S01. Thank you.[227.80][227.80][S01. Thank you.[227.88][227.88][S01. Thank you.[227.96][227.96][S01. Thank you.[228.04][228.04][S01. Thank you.[228.12][228.12][S01. Thank you.[228.20][228.20][S01. Thank you.[228.28][228.28][S01. Thank you.[228.36][228.36][S01. Thank you.[228.44][228.44][S01. Thank you.[228.52][228.52][S01. Thank you.[228.60][228.60][S01. Thank you.[228.68][228.68][S01. Thank you.[228.76][228.76][S01. Thank you.[228.84][228.84][S01. Thank you.[228.92][228.92][S01. Thank you.[229.00][229.00][S01. Thank you.[229.08][229.08][S01. Thank you.[229.16][229.16][S01. Thank you.[229.24][229.24][S01. Thank you.[229.32][229.32][S01. Thank you.[229.40][229.40][S01. Thank you.[229.48][229.48][S01. Thank you.[229.56][229.56][S01. Thank you.[229.64][229.64][S01. Thank you.[229.72][229.72][S01. Thank you.[229.80][229.80][S01. Thank you.[229.88][229.88][S01. Thank you.[229.96][229.96][S01. Thank you.[230.04][230.04][S01. Thank you.[230.12][230.12][S01. Thank you.[230.20][230.20][S01. Thank you.[230.28][230.28][S01. Thank you.[230.36][230.36][S01. Thank you.[230.44][230.44][S01. Thank you.[230.52][230.52][S01. Thank you.[230.60][230.60][S01. Thank you.[230.68][230.68][S01. Thank you.[230.76][230.76][S01. Thank you.[230.84][230.84][S01. Thank you.[230.92][230.92][S01. Thank you.[231.00][231.00][S01. Thank you.[231.08][231.08][S01. Thank you.[231.16][231.16][S01. Thank you.[231.24][231.24][S01. Thank you.[231.32][231.32][S01. Thank you.[231.40][231.40][S01. Thank you.[231.48][231.48][S01. Thank you.[231.56][231.56][S01. Thank you.[231.64][231.64][S01. Thank you.[231.72][231.72][S01. Thank you.[231.80][231.80][S01. Thank you.[231.88][231.88][S01. Thank you.[231.96][231.96][S01. Thank you.[232.04][232.04][S01. Thank you.[232.12][232.12][S01. Thank you.[232.20][232.20][S01. Thank you.[232.28][232.28][S01. Thank you.[232.36][232.36][S01. Thank you.[232.44][232.44][S01. Thank you.[232.52][232.52][S01. Thank you.[232.60][232.60][S01. Thank you.[232.68][232.68][S01. Thank you.[232.76][232.76][S01. Thank you.[232.84][232.84][S01. Thank you.[232.92][232.92][S01. Thank you.[233.00][233.00][S01. Thank you.[233.08][233.08][S01. Thank you.[233.16][233.16][S01. Thank you.[233.24][233.24][S01. Thank you.[233.32][233.32][S01. Thank you.[233.40][233.40][S01. Thank you.[233.48][233.48][S01. Thank you.[233.56][233.56][S01. Thank you.[233.64][233.64][S01. Thank you.[233.72][233.72][S01. Thank you.[233.80][233.80][S01. Thank you.[233.88][233.88][S01. Thank you.[233.96][233.96][S01. Thank you.[234.04][234.04][S01. Thank you.[234.12][234.12][S01. Thank you.[234.20][234.20][S01. Thank you.[234.28][234.28][S01. Thank you.[234.36][234.36][S01. Thank you.[234.44][234.44][S01. Thank you.[234.52][234.52][S01. Thank you.[234.60][234.60][S01. Thank you.[234.68][234.68][S01. Thank you.[234.76][234.76][S01. Thank you.[234.84][234.84][S01. Thank you.[234.92][234.92][S01. Thank you.[235.00][235.00][S01. Thank you.[235.08][235.08][S01. Thank you.[235.16][235.16][S01. Thank you.[235.24][235.24][S01. Thank you.[235.32][235.32][S01. Thank you.[235.40][235.40][S01. Thank you.[235.48][235.48][S01. Thank you.[235.56][235.56][S01. Thank you.[235.64][235.64][S01. Thank you.[235.72][235.72][S01. Thank you.[235.80][235.80][S01. Thank you.[235.88][235.88][S01. Thank you.[235.96][235.96][S01. Thank you.[236.04][236.04][S01. Thank you.[236.12][236.12][S01. Thank you.[236.20][236.20][S01. Thank you.[236.28][236.28][S01. Thank you.[236.36][236.36][S01. Thank you.[236.44][236.44][S01. Thank you.[236.52][236.52][S01. Thank you.[236.60][236.60][S01. Thank you.[236.68][236.68][S01. Thank you.[236.76][236.76][S01. Thank you.
How's the berry picking, Walter? Blueberries. Yeah, blueberries are still coming on pretty good.
How's the strawberry?
Oh, yes.
Good.
No peaches. It's not too white. 21.
Yeah, they're a tough one.
In this climate, yeah.
You get that cold wind and...
Yeah, Michael tracks it pretty close. But we... Rest of the year, Mark. He's done three months.
We had that really cold come in.
Yeah, it was long, we're gonna get cold. Hook people up. Play after you're going to spout.
Yeah. Got the roots plant stimulated and all of a sudden said, "Yeah, let's have this."
They were good, they were good for us.
So how many trees did you...
Same trees.
Yeah, just a... That's a good thing. Or where the peaches...
Well, what...
Kind of like everything else, strawberry. These don't like... The ironic is...
Everybody's mic is on. I call the meeting to order at 6:30. Stand due to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, Chair has some business to do. You're gonna take... It's nomination time for board positions again. So open the floor to nominations.
I'm gonna let Luke White stay on his chair.
Second it. Any further nominations? All in favor? All votes? Three one. Open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'm looking to nominate Walter Dawson for Vice Chair.
I second that.
Any further nominations? Nominations closed. All in favor? Four, none. Congratulations. I was gonna say something before I... Minutes, minutes for approval. Pass meetings. Will entertain the motion to accept all the minutes as one. One thing to come to mind. Here one. Okay, motion, second on. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor? Minutes are approved. All right, Alan, you're up.
Right, I have several updates, so I've sent out auto graveyard letters and did some visits. That was a great success. Had some people clean up some cars, so that was a good thing, and others are working on that. Just want to note that the application today for the 5 North Main Street property is a change to the original development plan, and it brings him into more conformance with our ordinance, which removes a need for variance for the size of the apartments, so I just wanted to note that. In the last two weeks, I wanted to let you know that I've had four inquiries about tiny houses in Mechanic Falls. It may be something you want to address at some time. I have three applications for September. One is an HVAC business, one is an auto sale business, and one is a caregiver retail sales business. You'll see that when I pass that all out. I just want to make you aware that there's a... There are those out there.
No.
I did send, the council asked me to reach out to Scott Ferland about the mill cleanup. I've done that. I've issued another, I looked at his file, looked at the steps outlined previously, and continued those steps. Asked for a letter back from him with detailed outline of his plan within a month, so we'll see how that goes. The three, or three ordinances I didn't get to or didn't have enough material for tonight's meeting that we can talk about in September, if that's what you choose, is the mixed-use development and the minimum lot size with water and sewer service. Both of those, I've, I reached out to other people because I'm not, I don't know a lot about that, those things. So I reached out to specialists. There's more to it than I expected, and I want to do some scenarios, play out scenarios on mapping to show you what might happen or what could happen if we didn't make those changes. And another ordinance possibility has come up about detailing what happens with facilities in the town that burn down by fire and putting some kind of timeline in effect as an ordinance for that, so that there's a plan for if those things happen. Rather than let it stretch out for a long period of time, we'll have something to say, "Hey, this is what you have to do. Here you go," and we can follow that along with the plan.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah, you can direct the question.
Do they, doesn't the state have a timeline?
Not that I know of. And that is it.
Anybody else with any questions? There's something interesting about that with the lot size and lot changes. One of our issues that we've been hearing from has been the fact that old homes are allowed to go anyplace within this community. Possibly that can be addressed in some way at the same time as all of these changes come in, so those are allocated to certain specific areas within the community.
Good, is it me?
Oh, and the other, the reason I was asking about the auto sales, if you don't want to say, it's fine, is that if the person does not own the property, they have to have a side degree.
Yeah, I understand that.
Thank you for that, Alan.
You're up.
Okay, new business, and it's 5 North Main Street. And it changes the site plan, if we all have that.
And can I just remind everyone, if they're talking, to talk right into the mic? Real close to their mouth. Couldn't hear Paula or Yulu, so you need, so the people on TV land, if there are, there are people out there, they, you need to speak right into the mic.
How many do we have in the audience tonight?
I just noticed, Ms. Judd, just so you know, who's the alternate, did, sent me a text message. I didn't notice it because I was in here doing things, but she can attend tonight via Zoom, but she won't be able to make the meeting itself. It won't be a problem other times, she said, just this time.
If she wishes to do an introduction, she may.
I don't think she's on, I don't know, I don't know if she, Zach is trying to get her the link and stuff.
All right.
So I didn't.
Would you like to come up and explain what's going on from last time to this time?
Make sure to push the button. Yeah, last time we talked about doing seven units in the building. They're gonna be 160 square feet approximately each. And actually several different things were looked at doing other than that along the way. And back when Fred Collins was here, I spoke with him about different things. We looked at possibly renting some portion of it to the Historical Society, which I'm involved with, and several other things came up. And it ended up that we got to the point of deciding it made more sense to do four units that were within compliance rather than trying to put people in like sardines and have just one person per unit. So we got to four units with 250 square feet, and actually I was gonna do an office in the front because I, really because I thought it would look better downtown to have something that looked like, something was more lively. But it sounds like it's going to be a hassle to do that. I'm better off to stay with four units, and so I just added a bedroom to the one in the front, which was the small space. It's only 130 square foot, the office was gonna be. So anyway, so we went from seven units down to four units, still sprinkled, still large tubs with handles and stuff in them, so you can get in and out, still senior housing, it's the idea. So that's pretty much it.
What did you say you were doing with that 130 feet?
It's just a bedroom.
Attached to one of the apartments.
Oh, bathroom.
Bedroom.
Bedroom.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so one will have its own separate bedroom, the rest of them are more like studios.
One will be one bedroom, the others will be studios.
Studios, yeah.
The bedroom itself.
The bedrooms.
Just the bedroom.
Just the bedroom.
Asking the bedroom itself.
Yeah, yeah, plus or minus 130 feet, yeah. Yeah, well, I'm gonna put a nice closet in it, so it'll, it'll lead up some of that space. Set it up nicely, so.
Sorry, anybody else got questions?
Nope.
Alan, what do we need to do here? Do we need to make a change to his original plan?
You can vote to cha, accept the change proposed. It's a, it, it brings it from a non-conforming facility to a conforming facility. So it's, it's really no issue. You approved the non-conforming facility already with a variance, so this is basically taking away that variance and not requiring anything like that.
So it's something that you can just issue a permit for?
He's, he's got the permit. He's, he's...
For the new one?
I did, yeah, an additional one, so.
You can just write a permit.
Yeah, just to change to his initial plan. If it, if, if you, if you approve it, just to change to the initial plan, which he's provided to us.
Okay. Hearing no comments from the board. Accept the motion. Which motion be to move the variance?
To accept this change to his initial site plan. I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion, then second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? Um, you don't have to take away the variance.
You don't have to, because you don't...
Variance isn't necessary at this point.
You don't need it any longer, so you don't need to remove it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All in favor? That's five oh.
Bill, I'll have a new use permit for you. I'll get it in the next couple days.
We have any old business that we need to discuss? Anybody from the board? Not hearing any, we'll pass over. Ordinance update. Yes?
We had talked about...
Yep, that's, that's, I'm sorry. Those are two, those are two that are coming up in September. Both of those.
On the slate to come up, yes.
And that was actually road frontage, right?
Yes, we have, we need to look at within our commercial district on Route 26 and/or Route 121 as to find out whether or not we can do certain things that would keep us within compliance, within what we need. That way, am I right in that?
Yep.
You know, not, and see what we can do.
That has to do with mixed use, commercial mixed use and road frontage. That's one of them. The other one is lot size, road frontage in the sewer and water district, both. And there's, there's quite a bit to that one.
I can just imagine.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to make sure because remind everybody that 26 was initially considered rural district. There's all kinds of houses that only have 200 feet. They have tons of acreage, and based on our core, current ordinances, it prohibits the outdoor use, and we need to...
Apparently, your mic wasn't working.
Can you hear me now?
But, yeah, we should be able to bring all that up at, at the next meeting. This could possibly be a slow process, where that would be two or three meetings away at least. All right, do we, Alan, you want to take eight, two, three, and four first?
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I'm gonna start with 8.2, which is a noise ordinance update. And...
Yeah, you need to suspend Robert's rules if you want to take things out of order. Or you can take them in order. We do have someone here for the first one.
All right, well, let's dive right in if that's what we want to do.
Good idea.
Eight, one. Marijuana ordinance update.
So just so you know, what I did was these, the two sheets, there are actually three sheets. The top says proposed ordinance changes. First one says marijuana. Right now, the existing marijuana mechanic falls land use ordinance says that. You can see down to where it says number nine. That's just the, the hierarchy of the ordinance. Adult use of medical marijuana retail operations. A, only four marijuana retail facilities shall be permitted in the town of Mechanic Falls. The proposed change is this. However, I do have a caveat because we got another application for adult use medical marijuana retail operations today. So it's something you want to consider, and I think we should consider it because we don't have a flood of applications at this point. We have one additional one.
One at Park Corner.
Yep. And, and if we, if that goes through, which I suspect, I, I don't see anything wrong with the application at this point. I've only briefly looked at it because it just came in. But I suspect that you probably authorize that. There, then we would have three in the town. So my ruling change, as I put it here, adult use of medical marijuana retail operations, only cross out four, change to two marijuana retail facilities shall be permitted in the town of Mechanic Falls. You would consider, I think you should consider changing that to three instead of two, because if you change, if you change it to two, there could be difficulty. If you just say three with what we currently have, I don't, I think there's much less chance of difficulty arising.
Medical and/or adult use.
It doesn't change it, it doesn't change the licensing. They can, the, the, the use permit that they're getting, and the one that came in today says adult use and medical marijuana retail. Both of those are included. And we would, we would license those, or the town council would license those, whatever the use, medical or adult use, for that facility or building. Notice the definition of facility is below. Facility is defined as one standalone building.
With, may I speak? Which is, I'm okay with that, but then we have a conflict. That piece of property only has 200-foot of road frontage, and we okayed chipmunk storage on it. So by doing this, it puts two uses on a piece of land that technically is only allowed one.
We're not talking about that right now, that, that proposal, because that's coming up next week. But the possibility, the possibility is that there because the individual that turned that in would do certain things that would bring him into compliance. So I have noted that.
What's the...
I've got no problem changing that to three.
Any further?
I got no problem changing it to half a dozen, for that matter.
Why do we want to change it at all?
Um, good question.
I mean, we're gonna accept, accept these, I mean, if someone puts in their application, we're gonna want to change it for that?
Well, the problem is, Walt, wording of the original ordinance saying two facilities with four, messed up on the wording.
When, when we first made this ordinance, the state had in its, in its rules and regulations the fact that the medical side had to be independent from the adult use. So that was the reason that we... So that was the reason that we had stated that we would like two facilities, but they would serve both uses. So that gave four licenses. So that's what-
And that's how we ended up-
That's how we ended up-
Facilities.
Here.
Right.
It wasn't worded specifically correct that way.
But since the states come along and changed their definition again.
Correct.
And I would suggest if you don't change the number, that you put the definition of facility in there. At least. Because if you don't-
We keep it at four and just change the definition for that matter.
That's up to you.
Make a motion?
Any other discussion on that?
Do we have to put this out for the people to vote on again?
I think you may have to have a hearing about that.
Yeah.
Have a hearing about it.
So it'll be, this, yeah, this will go to the council anyway, but-
The council would approve it. It would go for language through, um, through, well, the lawyer.
The council?
Correct. It would probably go someplace in, in the meantime, go to the attorney for language.
Yeah.
Well, for the first round.
Either way, it'll go some, at some point before it gets approved through the council. We'll go, yeah.
Yes, we want to make sure that that happens.
Yeah.
Um, I'm open to entertaining a motion for that.
Are we required to hear from the public if they're here about it? Before we vote?
All right, correct me on that. Can the public speak once this, they've been invited to speak, once the motion has been made and seconded?
Any discussion, yeah, any discussion?
Okay.
I got one more question before we move forward. Um, I can't recall exactly the wording that was put before the public. We had a public hearing on this already, and did the public already approve four facilities?
Yeah.
Okay, so all we're doing is adding the definition of what a facility is. Which-
It changes it. It's that legal crap.
Well, okay, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
It's modifying an ordinance, and the public has to have a right of saying it.
I think it just depends on what you guys decide, what you feel is the best for the town, whether it be four, two, three.
If we don't add the definition of what the facility is and let it stand at four facilities, we have no other changes to make. It's already been written and approved by the taxpayers for four facilities. And what they do in the facilities, whether it's medical or adult, who cares?
And does, but the thing about the facilities is that definition is so, it's not out there and not clear. What does that mean? Is the facility a license? Does that mean they, because initially we were thinking four facilities would have two buildings with, two buildings with two facilities in each one. So-
Which made for four licenses?
Right.
Which four, so four facilities. So now can we have four facilities each with two licenses?
That's what I'm reading.
Can we have eight facilities, four facilities for medical and four facilities for, good lordy?
Eight licenses.
So we still need to put a definition in there that the facility is the building.
Yeah, and not the license contained in, because back when we did it, the state said a facility was a license, and they had to be separated, had to go from adult use.
That is correct. That's the way terminology came around. We need to, if we leave it alone, there's four licenses that are available. Correct? And we define the license, do we define a license being attached to a building?
I didn't talk to anyone about defining the license. In fact, I, the people I have spoken with said, just leave the licenses out of them. What do you want in your town? We want, you initially wanted two buildings.
Correct.
With marijuana. Do whatever you want to do, as long as it's legal in that marijuana building.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah, but now you say there's a third one coming up.
There is.
All right, so why isn't this definition suitable as it is? Just leave it at four. Then a fourth one can come in.
And do the same thing as Yella took.
Yeah.
But I've, with discussions I've had, they could, you could misunderstand that facility part. Because initially those facilities were licenses. What if they, what if someone comes up and says, no, no, we, we got four facilities. Each one of those, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have two licenses in each one of those. Or I'm gonna have four facilities for adult use and four facilities for, so then you're gonna have eight for facilities, adult use, four facilities for retail. What?
But only four buildings?
No, that's, you don't say four buildings right now. Doesn't say anything about four buildings. Says four facilities, and they were defining facilities as licenses previously.
But it's still only four.
Right?
That's what he wants to add.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm saying that's good.
And that's fine.
But just, just-
So keep it at four if you want, and just say definition of the facility is a standalone building, period.
So in parentheses beside facility, you put building or buildings.
Underneath it, you would define, say specifically that definition, facility is defined as a standalone building. Right underneath that section.
It's, uh, the state is actually leaning towards at some point in time that medical is actually gonna go away. It's just gonna be adult use. You show your medical card, you have adult use if you get the medical price. All right, so consensus is, is we're gonna change the, we're gonna define facility. Correct?
Uh, yeah, I, you got, someone needs to make a motion, I would think.
Yeah, but I'm reading this, it already says that. Did I miss?
So just leave it as that. Leave it as, say, leave it as four facilities and add the definition of facility. So that would be your motion.
Definition's on my paper.
It is, but it isn't in the original.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion if we add, if we add the definition of facilities. Second up. Any further discussion from the board?
Question. So we'll leave it at four and just add the definition of what a facility is.
All right.
You don't need to do that.
I don't care if you do.
Just be grown.
Just there, Six Lane Road. So, um, I think that the biggest thing I'm hearing from the crowd and the town and the operators, Bob, Clark, and myself, is that I think we really need to start to think back of like, what was the intention? We went in front of the city, we talked to the public, and we, we sat down and wrote the ordinance. What was the intention of the law there? I really believe that the intention that we all, especially Bob and I, when we chose to place our businesses in the town of Mechanic Falls, is that we intended there to only be two stores, that plain and simple, two stores in town. You know, Bob and I would operate one, uh, we both operate two licenses, uh, we called them up. So I'd be operating a marijuana, medical marijuana retail facility and an adult use retail facility in the same location. I think that's what the, uh, the lens we need to kind of look at this law is. What did the public understand as to what would be in the town? You know, when we think about the image of Mechanic Falls, you know, do we really want four stores here? You know, I think this is a question of quality, not quantity. And I think that, uh, both Bob and I have proven ourselves to be, you know, uh, very active in the community. I think we're, uh, we've paid our, you know, our, our dues on time, and we've been operating legally and, you know, without reproach in this time. And Bob and I both went into this understanding that we would be the only operators of town. Um, and that, I think as the law is written right now, we can still do that. We can still operate. I am currently operating a medical marijuana retail facility, as is Bob. And we've both applied with the town to operate, uh, the other two facility licenses. June ninth, you guys have a letter of intent signed from both Bob and I coming here to try to apply for those other two retail facilities. So that would suffice all four retail facilities in the town of Mechanic Falls. So it, uh, it's kind of, it weirds me out, and I'm, I don't understand why we're, I do agree it would help to have some definition in the word facility. But I think that whatever the board chooses to change the definition to, I think we should keep the intent of the law, the idea that we went into writing this ordinance and, uh, overall feeling for the town, you know, and its people and its taxpayers. That's the biggest thing, taxpayers. You know, Bob and I both pay taxes in town here. You know, we're not leasing space. And I think that we're, we want to operate in this space, and we wanted to, uh, you know, do it as quality, not quantity. So, and, uh, I think that also, I think that when you start to look at other operators, uh, I talked to Alan earlier, I think it was last week, about there have been, correct me if I'm wrong, and there's been no other cannabis cultivation licenses given out in town. Apart from Bob, I believe is only one with a legal cannabis license. So under, um, I don't remember, it's part of the back of this, medical marijuana cultivation license. And as you guys remember, in, as part of this ordinance, if you're not operating, uh, if you haven't declared yourself by April 1st of 2020 to be operating a cultivation facility, you are out of compliance. And if you're not operating, if you haven't declared yourself by April 1st, 2020, then your cultivation facility has to go in front of the planning board for approval before we move any further. That's right in the ordinance. And we did that to try to get, you know, for safety reasons first and foremost. You know, and we tried, because we wanted everybody to be above board operators. You know, we, we wanted people to be able to say, hey, I'm operating in town, I'm operating legally. And, uh, I think that this, uh, ambiguity in the wording of facilities has really given people kind of a, a crack to drive a, try to drive a wedge into, to really try to divide, you know, and get into the, um, get into the business here. And I think that I really would implore you, the board, being to understand, you know, what we went into this wording, the idea that when we first sat down a year ago, when we started talking about what, what would be envisioned to be the wording of this law, what do we envision, you know, the town to look like, you know? I think that both Bob and I have done a great job beautifying our facilities, uh, the land that we operate on. And I think that, um, we should keep it, whatever you guys choose to change the wording to, if you choose to change it. I think that, uh, we should move forward with both granting our other two applied for retail facility licenses, both Bob's and mine's, adult use retail facility license. That's sufficing all four retail facility licenses in town.
I see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's not invite people.
Alan, do you have, in front of you, by any chance, do you have that moratorium that we put on for facilities to move forward and come and acknowledge that they were growing marijuana within our community?
I-
Ninety-eight.
I, I believe-
It's right there, pretty much.
So TJ is, is correct. Say it again. Existing medical marijuana cultivation operation, having some people for, uh, police supply for approval. And all names, ordinance update, trying to operate without a conditional use permit. And, um, just so you know, I, I haven't found any, uh, approximately anybody that's doing, uh, that's operating cultivation, operation, intent, that would not have crossed, and spoken with anyone. There are some big operations in town that were, several licenses were permitted.
Question? Um, what's going on over in Chipmunk, uh, behind Chipmunk Storage? Wouldn't that constitute cultivation? It's in a 12,000 square foot building.
Um, that's not, I don't think we're talking about that.
Yeah, well-
No, that, they're, they're permitted. They're permitted. They're cultivations.
That's my question. They have a cultivation?
No, they don't. They're permitted through their separate use, which is probably going off.
No, I just wanted to, he brought up that point of that we had this moratorium effect where people could come forward and acknowledge for safety reasons, for our firefighters and our police officers, make sure that we understood what they were responding to if they ever had to.
Can I, can I get a question?
No, not right now.
I need-
And TJ also brought up, you know, he brought up a few other interesting facts that, yes, they've been here for, you know, forever, been trying and been working with us to get the license. You know, I just want to send out a gratitude and say, yes, thank you. Your, your help has been appreciated all through this, um, through the F L. And-
Asset to the town.
You know, and I want to acknowledge that.
Can I?
Now you can.
What is the definite, what is the difference between, uh, the cultivation aspect? But yet Alan's saying that what's behind Chipmunk, not cultivation, what about for, you know, marijuana growing?
Well, the-
What is that permit for? Say they're licensed or permitted through the town. What's it for?
There are several caregivers in that facility. Each, each caregiver is a caregiver from the state of Maine. Yeah, licensed.
Each caregiver has a designated space where they're growing.
Yes.
And they're growing only what they can do as a caregiver.
That's right.
Yep. It's not one large grow operation. It's several.
All right, any other further discussion? There's a motion on the floor, spend seconded to just change the wording, do you have that? Could you read it back to us, please?
The whole thing, or?
No, just the most.
Yeah. Do you want to say the definition? I, what I have here is facility is defined as one standalone building.
Yeah, we'll add that to. Do we need to make an amendment to that?
Yeah.
Second to that amendment. It's seconded. All right, we'll take these in order. The first one is the, clarify the definition of facilities. All in favor? That's five, nothing. Uh, the second vote is to the definition of the facility. As a standalone building.
I thought that's-
No, the first one was the definition, to change the definition of facility. All in favor of that? Yeah, five, nothing. All right, moving on. Noise.
Don't we have to make a motion whether the key or the rest of it out there?
No, it's already, it's already part of the ordinance.
We're changing the definition by the specific word.
Okay. We don't have to. If I could, then I would like on the record that I have been asking for a moratorium for months because I saw this train wreck coming, and I- because I saw this train wreck coming and I am highly against just making that definition without further republic hearing.
So noted.
So the next one is noise. You can see the top one is the existing ordinance. We only talked about last time adding the times. And, and I thought that it seemed a little wordy with the words in there. You can see the proposed change with the strike through. It says be required to. If we just remove that, I think it makes it clearer. Must be muffled instead of must be required to. It must be muffled. The per, you're talking to the person making unreasonable noise between these hours. They must be, those noises must be muffled, so as not to be objectionable due to intermittents, beat frequencies, shrillness or volume. So I put that change in there only to make it clear. You can say that's stupid. We want to leave the original wording. Just add the numbers if you want.
Yeah, this doesn't affect anything that would be like commercial type of building or industry, industrial that we already have within our community.
Right, it's talking, it specifically talking about, a- a- and since you put the time in there, um, 11 to, 11 PM to 6 AM, it's someone's right to peace and tranquility in the neighborhoods. I mean, it doesn't specific, doesn't say anything specific to a neighborhood, because I didn't, you, you didn't voice that at all.
Yeah, well, I'm kind of raising that at this point in time, because we do have some industry. And I don't know if they're close enough to be really of any issue to anybody.
I have to wonder what it might have been. I saw it on this one as well. What's the definition of noise? What noise are we talking about?
And, and my, my concern is that we do have the dye placed down by the car wash. We've got the car washed, but yet we have apartments and houses there too. So would it affect those businesses?
This is my question. Yeah, there's two.
How's the place to find the force? Just kind of curious, up the office or on duty, is that too loud?
Yeah, I think.
Blinding neighbor calling every 15 minutes.
I think, um, as new ordinances, new suggestions for changes, ordinance come up, I'm going to ask you why. I'm going to ask right off the bat, why you want to change that? What's your point?
This can train us a lot.
Exactly.
So enforcement is extremely difficult. Jeff Goss has said that it is. Other towns, I've talked to Hollowell specifically, and they said it's, yep, when we get a complaint about someone's music too loud in downtown Hollowell, we get down there and the music isn't loud.
Oh, it, it's difficult to enforce. I will agree with that.
Yeah.
We do have a nuisance ordinance within the community that could actually apply to this.
Yes.
I make a motion.
Oh, well, actually, it's just, we don't make any changes.
No changes.
I apologize if I put you in the spot, Alan. It wasn't intended. Um. Take a motion to strike this one. Take it away and not even, just did?
Yeah, that's what I did. I made a motion that we just.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing.
Next one, household trash. I did talk to MMA Legal on this one. And you can see the note that they said. FYI, this language, they suggested the language below where it says occupants and or owners. But they also said, this language is common provision that is usually contained in a more comprehensive solid waste disposal ordinance. So we could add this, but MMA does say it's usually a more comprehensive kind of ordinance. Drawn out or in specific to solid waste and different kinds of solid waste and.
But that would be more tuned to a larger community also.
It just, um, they said that any kind of community, whoever does it, usually if they do that, they do a larger, more comprehensive plan for solid waste specifically. And I didn't get into any more of that with them. They said, this is some language that we could use if we wanted to do that. And it would be simpler than most communities do. But you can.
They're saying we can, but we don't have to do a comprehensive plan in order to do it.
Right. They said we could use this. However, most communities do a more comprehensive plan. So to me, that says, it says just that. You can use this if you want to. I don't, they didn't say anything about it being poor, a poor choice or anything like that. They just commented. And I, I mean, I can't extrapolate anymore out of it than what they tell me.
Well, this, this whole, all came about because of specific, uh, places within our community that were having trash that was put out on the sidewalk and visible from the street. And it was staying there for weeks, if not months. This is just an effort to kind of get them to hide it. Because I think the way we worded it was to make sure it wasn't in the line of sight.
Question. With our health parts of our ordinance, wouldn't that cover it in the health agent or? I guess that's fallen on the code officer now, just be able to go and do what he needs to do without any further ordinance required?
Well, Alan would have to be the one to answer that in a different capacity than he's re, he's reporting here tonight.
I just don't, uh.
Will this help you enforce law?
I think it will. I think something along these lines would be a good thing. Even, even with properties that aren't dealing with just garbage bags beside the road. But properties that have more stuff on their lawn. If it's a, if it's a health problem, if we have a specific ordinance talking about that. Some, some places I can tell you that I've witnessed and I'm, I'm heading down those roads. They've been like that for years and you know they have. And, and I don't know that a whole lot's going to change them, but at least there's specific wording about this stuff, which is clearly a health hazard. If they have garbage that's on their lawn or that's by the road and it's getting sprayed all over the place. Yeah, that's a specific problem. And here's a specific ordinance. Uh, you can't do this. And I'm telling you, you need to clean that up. It's a health issue. And here's your violation.
And for the feelings? How does everybody feel about it? Wish to adopt it or leave it alone? It's just kind of sad that you have to make someone clean a frigging mess up. Way it is, I mean, I don't know. You either look at it or do something about it.
Augusta does. Hollowell does. Requires it in a plastic container.
And that's what we initially described was to have it in a container.
A suitable, suitable container which shields it from public view and protects it from pests and other animals.
I make a motion that we accept the language that's been proposed to us for a residential solid waste ordinance. Which says occupants and or owners shall secure all bagged or unbagged residential solid waste and recyclable material in a suitable container which shields it from the public view and protects it from pests and other animals. Occupants and or owners should not, shall not be, shall not permit solid waste or recycled materials to accumulate on or about the premises except the suitable containers.
Do you want to include the definition down below?
I would also like to have it, have the definition, which is residential solid waste is any household trash or rubbish. I'm sorry.
You can, you can copy it.
You want to copy it?
At a later date.
You read the motion to it.
As well. Write down below it.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Do we have any further discussion? I'm one that the simple line looks good to me, but. Okay, all in favor? So moved. Good luck.
I've actually had kind of, it's kind of fun with the cars.
Job security. All right, we'll go on to eight point four, which is kennels.
So this one, what I gleaned from the minutes from last meeting was, was that we could add that kennel to the table of uses, which I've given a copy of. So where it says section two land uses, and it goes on to that next page, table of uses. I highlighted that and it says instructional businesses and mobile vendors. The new line would be kennels and it would be allowed in this zone, rural, rural, rural district, sorry, and not in any other district. So, um, something I want to point out there is the definition, which is, was in there, it, it's in our ordinance already. It does talk about right here where it says proposed change kennel and an establishment in which more than four dogs or four cats are sold, housed, bred, boarded, or trained for a fee. When I read that housed, do you have any people that own more than four dogs that is in the kennel? I know it says, or trained for a fee, but.
Is there a timeframe on that? Let's say somebody has three dogs and they need to babysit their child's two other dogs. So now they have five dogs at their residence.
Yeah. So what you guys were talking about was limiting kennels to bigger built up area.
Limiting kennels within the community where dogs are bred for sale. Or animals, uh, cats bred for sale. That was the specific thing. And as you know, my feeling is, is, um, I wouldn't, don't want any more in town. We have plenty.
The rising trail. That guy probably just walked out. There is a trail. On trailer park. Where there's a number beyond four dogs. I don't know why he does. But he has a small lot.
This was never intended to be against anybody's personal choice for animals.
Right. So it does say housed, bred, boarded, or trained for a fee. So I think that's clear enough. If they're not doing it for a fee, they own them, they're housing them, but not for a fee. Guess that's okay.
I would think. Because it's not targeted for a productive.
Doing it for money.
And these are for domestic animals.
Dogs and cats.
Just dogs and cats.
Yeah. Yeah.
So someone can have six dogs.
Right.
And then it falls under.
Slod dogs or whatever.
Yeah, if, if there's a problem with a neighbor, it falls under the nuisance order, ordinance. So you're disrupting your nuisance.
We do have an owner that has like ten dogs. In order to have presence with a kennel, license, each kennel contains ten dogs. So you have, and they have to tag feet for each kennel. And if you have up to ten dogs, you have to kennel. But if you have multiple kennels. For the kennels that we have currently have, they have more than ten dogs. They have to be at a kennel. At forty-two dollars.
But they don't sell any of them.
The ones that we have.
Are selling them?
But if you have personal pets and you have ten of them or more than them, and you're not breeding them, you don't have to license your kennel.
Yeah, then if you said someone had sled dogs, you know, they would have approximately that many. That's not what this is intended for, for breeders.
Now, how does this affect current kennels that are in zones that this will say no to?
Same, they would be grandfathered. Yep, they were there before the ordinance took place.
Will they be allowed to sell it or will it, once they sell it, that right goes away?
Whatever they're currently doing. If they're licensed for it now, are they licensed for it?
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking. Say one of these kennels decide to sell. One of these breeding kennels decide to sell. Is there anything in particular we need to do to say if it's not in, if it's in one of these other zones and not in our old district, that when they sell that, that, that business has to go away?
Do they, do those places have a use permit to do that?
Sell, yeah.
Dogs.
That's why I'm asking how that would.
That use permit, as far as Jack, our, our attorney goes, I asked him this, and he said, use permits go with the land. Go with the property. Right, right. But the use permit, if they have that facility has a use permit for a kennel there and they go away, that stays with the land. That land is licensed for a kennel, which kind of surprised me.
For how long?
It goes with the land. Goes with the land. So, so if they, yeah, until, for, like if they stopped for a year, if they sold it and nothing happened for a year, that use permit's there. But after a year's time, I believe that would go away. Not positive about that, but that's the way other use permits have, are operating in town. If they don't keep that business up. With, if, if something stops the business, the business goes away, they can rebuild that. They can start that back up again in a year's time. If they don't do it in a year's time, the use permit is now gone.
Any further discussion? All in, take a motion.
You could add, we're going to add the, add kennels to the table of uses, land use districts. And kennels will be allowed in the rural district and, but in no others.
And it'll be a conditional permit.
That's bad.
In the rural district.
Yeah. It can be. But if they, yep, if no one's, if they stop the business and it's no longer a kennel for a year, that use goes away. I got to say, I was very surprised that a use permit goes with the land.
I am.
I was very surprised.
It's probably for a limited period of time.
He didn't say that there was only the 12 month period. So I was very surprised with that.
Yeah, you'd have to get a definition of that. I'd really like to see that, I'm sure. Sell the business. No way you can sell the business.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, this is, Fod made a motion. Yes or no?
Make a motion and get what he gets there.
So you'd like to add kennels to the table of uses. And in that table of use, kennels would have a conditional acceptance in rural district? And not allowed in any other district?
Yeah.
Any second?
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five, oh.
And as I'm looking at my notes here, I see that there was an eight, five, but the notch box one that you, that you do have notes on still. We have our, that was already approved in, by a planning board in the past. And, and she showed me that. So I think we just need to get that wording to the council. I don't know if we have to move on that or not. I don't know what we do with that.
I'm surprised it's not there. Well, yeah.
Well, we have moved on and it should have been in the minutes.
It is in the minutes. And I've checked that. So I can just take those minutes and.
Present it to the.
To the board.
Yeah. I'm almost positive that once the legislature convenes, that this is going to be a standard thing for commercial and industrial properties within the state of Maine.
So I just, I just picked some, I just wrote some wording out. Just in case.
Yeah. That it?
That's it.
A second now.
Uh, next meeting?
It's on the front.
Third Wednesday of.
September 21st.
September 21st. And before we continue, Fod needs to read a statement he has.
This is pretty short, so we won't keep up with all of it.
Okay. My eyes are glass over. Last meeting, I got accused of being stoned while I left here.
You didn't invite me with you?
Well, let's see the way it is. Honest to goodness.
What a name this is, Paul, anyway. Listen, I address this to Lou Cameron. Please accept my resignation as a member of the Metro Call Planning Board effective August 18, 2020. I wish the board the best and appreciate your support during the time on the board. I've been able to somebody else who wants one, I know. So happy to have that happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Paul. You're welcome.
And, and I have talked to Melanie Judge. She would be happy to take the position.
You're taking that?
The full, the regular position instead of an alternate.
They say ditto, but I, I won't.
Okay, adjourning. All in favor? That's a unanimous.
Are these new books ours to take home?
Yeah.
That's a 7:35, Julie.
They don't have.
Some information before you guys leave. I had a conversation with a Tracy Jakes today from the Office of Marijuana Enforcement. And she's doing virtual meetings for anybody that'd be interested, looking to set one up so that we can do one. It's not mandatory that you attend.
When are they?